I plan to be the lead institute of fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
I think we're kind of in here. Yeah. Okay. Alexander. Yes. Henry. Yes. Cuman.
Yes.
Luntine.
Here.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Alexander.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Luntine.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm in the wrong place here. We will move on to our reports. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I'll make a couple of things. I think we've established a date for our community conversations on the fifth Tuesday of September, which would be September 29th. And this would be a great timing with considering the publicity and city addition is anticipated for mid-September and also will be kind of like on par with our quarterly schedule. The other item I'd like to mention is the city addition is we're requesting inputs and our deadline is August 10th. So I think Anthony wrote a letter to most of the council and directors, but we're trying for our deadline of August 10th again. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to comment as we go along.
Thank you. Report from Fire Chief Newman.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor Roach, members of council, members of the community. Just a couple of things to report this evening. There's a Heart Saver CPR course that'll be held at the Richmond Heights Fire Station on Monday, August 17th, 2015, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. Division of Fire in partnership with University Hospital Richmond Medical Center offers bimonthly CPR courses to residents of Richmond Heights. The Heart Saver CPR course is a classroom video-based instructor-led course that teaches CPR and AED use, that's Automatic External Defibrillator, as well as how to relieve choking on an adult. Anybody who's interested in the class can call me at (216) 383-6304. Class size is limited to 12 students per class. These classes are free to residents of Richmond Heights. This course is for the general public. It's not the healthcare provider course. And on Monday, July 20th, Division of Fire gave the Heart Saver CPR class to our CERT team, our Community Emergency Response Team members. Everybody did quite well. In fact, I have all of their CPR cards in my possession that I'll pass out at the next meeting, as well as some pocket masks courtesy of University Hospital. Another item that's coming up, UH Richmond, University Hospital Richmond is hosting a Free Family Health and Safety Day at the Richmond campus on Saturday, August 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Richmond Heights residents are encouraged to celebrate wellness at this event, which includes free health screenings, education and demonstrations, plus family-friendly activities featuring the University Hospital Rainbow Babies and Children's Hospital Safety Squad, Division of Fire Rescue, as well as Division of Fire, Fire Engine. Our personnel will be participating in the event. Pre-registration is required for select health screenings. For more information, residents can call (216) 593-1768. This information is on our website. Some of the pre-registered health screenings include hearing tests, lower extremity vascular skin cancer, and some of the walk-up screenings include blood glucose, bone density, cholesterol and stroke risk assessment. University Hospital Richmond is dedicated to 27,100 Chardon Road. And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Police Chief Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council and members of the community. We're currently in the process of putting together a DARE grant request for the school year 2015 and '16. We were successful last year in getting some funds to help fund the program at the elementary school and are hopeful that we'll get that grant again. As far as our activity, police activity within the community, our calls for service are up about 2%. Our arrests are up 13%. Our overall measure of all activity, which is usually our CAD entries, is actually down by 3%. And our Part 1 crimes are also about even to where they were last year, though our burglaries have declined significantly, 69%. The mall accounts for 5.8% of our calls for service, 17% of our arrests. On July 15th, we ordered two new police vehicles. They should be delivered, the timeframe is six to eight weeks. That's going to allow us to retire two vehicles that have well over 100,000 miles and won't be, I'm not sure if they'll be usable for any other department or not because they're pretty big. One of them has, I believe, 173,000 miles. That was the old K-9 vehicle. And if you remember Kubo, he drove all over the place, so. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay.
Phil's on vacation.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, this is a brief comment if I could about the building division.
Yes, Chief Newman.
I know everybody's waiting for our post office parking lot to be repaid. I've been in communication with the higher ups. They assured me that it is on the schedule, it's going to be done this year. They have a lot of, they have a lot of other post office parking lots that are going to be serviced and ours is just going to be one of them, so we've got to wait our turn.
This year?
They tell me this year, so I just wanted to pass that along to everyone.
So we just hit them in the hotline of 10 minutes, this last 10 minutes?
I've been on this thing for months.
Okay, thank you. That's a good update. All right. Mr. McHale.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council and residents. Just a couple of brief items tonight. First of all, I'm happy to announce that the APA Art Clerk will be starting on Monday. It's been a long time coming and I'm glad that that position filled. We're still in the process of identifying candidates for a payroll position, but I'm hoping that one will be filled soon as well. I did mention this in the meeting, but it's, Mayor's mentioning a public meeting or a more public forum, I guess. I just want to update on the gap conversion. That is where the financial statements of the city are put into a form that is used by investors and people who are interested in how the city is performing on an annual basis. That process is almost complete. I was reviewing the final draft prior to submitting that and following that up, the state hours will be coming back and starting the 2014 audit on Monday as well. And so we're looking forward to making good progress on that. And that's my report for this.
Thank you very much. Service Director, Donald Verniskey.
Thank you, Madam President. I did that over council on college and my excitement of being able to get something for nothing from someone, I think I failed to let you all know because we had a company going through the city, through GPS network. And there was a special company that came to us through the title of county engineers' department that went around in GPS all of our manual covers, storm sanitary, all of the catch basin statements and parking lots and GPS whatever greenish that were in parking lots for us. And this was really charged. They had a group going through a lot of different cities, they're offering to just about everybody, but they're focusing on smaller cities up our side, sides and town trips. And they have a group of people that they train through the GPS department, they're going to make their findings available to us as well as the county so the county can update their map of everything because they've also found that there are some things that the county didn't know. They'll be pushing that up this week. I think we only have two sections to do the data for the center of the city, but we will have a complete study on that. So it kind of goes back to a little bit of what we talked about in the meeting about the funds for the sewer and the storms. We will definitely know when we get 700 or 1,000 catch bases in our city. So it gives us a good idea of what these children are working at. And we're just going to be really focused on the case. So it's pretty accurate, but to give it for nothing is pretty exciting. I'd also like to know, and I think I've got information on our website, that the chipper is back in operation. It's been out there. And we're just trying to catch up on a lot of those streets that the residents have been having a lot. They also are still popular with young kids from youth opportunities in the city. They're pushing that up as they get there. Actually, this is their last week, so it really is going to be a nice process. And we've got some street repairers, Stevenson, because we've got around the corner, there's been some catch bases in Paris. We have a double catch basin that's kind of bigger than the normal. It's right in the middle of the city. But it's dropped down so far, they just started driving now and they're going to drive themselves. And maybe starting back tomorrow or the next day. And then general maintenance in parks and baseball fields, buildings, and we've been doing out for months and thank the city for that. But there are a number of sites for looking to go, or look like the top area.
Thank you.
I think it would be good, I'm sorry, to add also that we did, we did have about five youth opportunity unlimited kids this summer. So we had three that was working with the service and doing some things in the park and painting hydrants, et cetera. We had a couple in the administration helping out in the building department and administration area. So the kids, I think, had a great experience and was a good help for us during the summer.
Can we go try to end this? We'll do it next year.
And I think we'll try to do that again. And again, we've, we've also had an intern from CS, Cleveland State, and he worked out very well also. So we've, I think, did well this, this summer and I appreciate all the support from the directors and stuff, helping, helping guide, guide them along.
Yes, I have to thank you all too because I am a dear work to give kids and youth opportunities. And I know it takes a lot of work and patience to do your job and teach them to do their jobs also. So I really appreciate all of you and all of your other people within your departments who helped us make it possible to employ those students this year. So thank you all very much. And I'm glad we were able to participate in that project, yes.
I have two comments for Service Director. Number one, earlier this evening in my, in our safety committee, we talked about striping the driveway coming in between the city. Mr. Courtney, Chief Row will be in contact with you. I would really like to see if it's possible because that's not before school. I know school is up early this year. I know you have a lot of other things to do. We're not talking about any other streets. This one in particular, I think it's very important for the buses and incoming cars. So if you'd be kind enough to look into that and see what you could do about that, I'd really appreciate it. The second thing, if I may, real quickly, in, in our city park, Richmond City Park, going from the parking lot into the picnic pavilion, it's a very short distance of grass. I have been told by some handicapped individuals with wheelchairs that it would be great if that curb could be cut at some point and have a pad. It's, I'm guessing it's maybe eight to 10 feet, not much longer than that, from the parking lot to the picnic pavilion. It rains at just other times. It's hard for them to get into that area. It doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but if you'd be kind enough to look at it, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to City Engineer, Lee Courtney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one question for councilmen. You know, we had the crosswalk out here figured and it didn't work. That won't happen next year. Do you need that done with what Don does or as long as you have the strength and going back the driveways, that good?
I would think they would suffice for the time being for two. It's just concerning to me about the school time with the buses. I, I've seen cars literally go behind other cars and the bus to get into the, into that street. You know, they're up, they're up waiting for an opportunity to get out onto Highland Road and because it's so wide, they sneak right around them and shoot in. I just think it could be a potential hazard. And I think what you're suggesting, if just a strike, it could leave a suspicion right on it.
Great. The only other thing I have, Madam President, road program bits were that Friday with the contract award and the instructions that were in place.
Great, thank you. Recreation Director, Jessica Giff.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of taking two of our youth opportunity unlimited participants over Greenwood Farms to work on painting projects with Pam O'Donnell. We painted areas of the kitchen and the stairs leading up to the second floor. It was a great experience for the youth and big thanks to Pam for organizing the day and the project for us. We've really, really enjoyed it.
That's good.
The fall 2015 program schedule is developing well and I plan to present that. The upcoming opportunities of the Back to School Celebration on August 13th at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I'll be taking registration forms and then program information regarding all the recreation in the city. As to the recreation board, I've identified another candidate that will represent a nomination from the Board of Education. We have reached out to schedule an interview. We have selected individuals to continue on with the second phase of the interview process and have completed four of those interviews. And finally, we have the Under the Stars concert with Dennis Samson in the night parties at Greenwood Farms tomorrow from 6:30 to 8:30. And we will have a food truck there serving hot dogs, sausage, ice cream. Please come enjoy it. And this concludes my report for the evening.
Madam President.
Yes.
I heard from a birdie that there was, the YMCA conducted a simulated drowning audit at the pool today and that our staff at the pool turned in one of the best times they've ever seen on backboarding and removing that individual from the pool. So congratulations to the staff at the pool and things seem to be going pretty well there.
Above, Pam. Glad to hear that. Thank you. Great, thank you. Economic Development Director, Crystal Best.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, members of council and community. I have a few brief comments tonight. I received a call from the land bank. We've been with the land bank this week and he says that he is ready to demolish, they are ready to demolish, the property of Richmond Park West, I mean the other 1070 Richmond Park West and the house on Highland Road. And I called up, I don't have the address, but it was the other house that we have on the demolition list for that first round of demolition bond fund dollars. So the two houses should come down according to the land bank within a month. So I'm crossing my fingers they will be able to get those two lighted properties down and we can move on to the gas station on Chardon Road. As far as the gas station on Chardon Road is concerned, we had our conference call today. We are waiting to sign up on the subgrant agreement. The council approved the subgrant agreement in March, but as you know, we have to make some adjustments to the subgrant agreement because of the way the ground program is structured. We have to take out the above-ground storage tanks while the property is still in possession of, of the state. And then we can just take, take out the underground storage tank and demolish the building. So that is a little bit of a twist in the whole process. But we should be getting the analysis of brownfield cleanup activities from partners within the week and we should be able to sign off on the subgrant agreement hopefully around the same timeframe or as the mayor has tried it. And then we can sign up from the county showing that there is a brownfield cleanup project taking place and I think that will give the residents a lot of, a lot of comfort that the structure is coming down in the very near future. On August 26th, we are having our real estate and business showcase in collaboration with Richmond Mall and some local area realtors and mortgage lenders and banks. So I know I had got flyers at the last meeting, there are some, there is some information available on our website, but we hope that when we come out, this is an opportunity to showcase some of the wonderful real estate that is available for purchase in Richmond Heights, both new construction as well as properties that have been in the community over the last several years and beautiful branches and split branches that our community really cherishes. And have a lead?
Yes, that concludes my report. So if you have any questions, have a lead. All right, thank you. Okay, then. We'll move to audience. Any audience questions or comments? Can you say your name and address?
Sure. My name is Jim Janko, 393 Kerry J. I submitted a list of comments, questions to Betsy for the record and also Mark Alexander has it and I'll give this copy to Frank Luntine since he's my councilman. I just, I don't expect answers from any of these tonight. I just wanted to have the council keep these questions in the back of their mind when they're officially received, the zoning variance for 391 Kerry J., which is my neighbor. The Diocese of Cleveland is looking to have that become a group home. And so here's some of the questions and, you know, like I said, I'm not looking for answers tonight.
We'll try and answer some of them tonight.
Okay. Are the, you know, the new residents are going to be children, they're young adolescents, 13 to 17 or 14 to 17. So are the new residents choosing to live in this new group home or don't they have a say, they're just being placed there? If not, are they, you know, being placed there, is that a violation of the Federal Housing Act since we're, you know, if we deny them access to this property, you know, the children? Since they're non-adults and they're, they're not renting because they're not putting any money towards this, the diocese is receiving money through Medicaid or whatever, do they fall under the same government restrictions that an adult would that wants to rent there with the Fair Housing Act? Are new owners just moving their business from one location to many others by removing residents from a large building down in Euclid and splitting up amongst many houses? So it's still a business, they're just moving it around? And then what happens if the children age out at age 21? Do they move to a new home somewhere else or they get institutionalized somewhere else? Are the restrictions in the city charter that do not permit, are there any restrictions that do not permit 4 to 6 underage children living in a residence without a parent or foster parent? You know, they're just, they're going to only have caregivers there. What happens when the issues are with more than three children at a time and there's only three caregivers there 24 hours a day? You know, what happens? What other support people will be in and out of the house and how often? Because it could create a lot of traffic. And there's a lot of high-speed traffic on that street even though it's supposed to be 25 miles an hour. There's, people do come through there quite quickly and it's right at an intersection at Euclid Chagrin and then Royal Oak and then Kerry J. So it's right there, that corner, that triangle. What other support people, oh, I'm sorry, I already did that one. Will these children be mainstreamed into our public schools? And if so, what's the impact on our school system? How much money is our school system going to have to put out? Because that's going to require a lot of special education, a lot of special needs people that we may not have in our school system today. And also that property become tax exempt, so it's no longer producing money that's going into our school system through taxes. You know, the property taxes will be virtually zero. What were the reasons that Richmond Heights decided on a limit of five unrelated adults or people living in one residence? That's something in our charter, I guess, and that's why there's the zoning variance being brought up to the zoning committee for the planning. And then will the city annually inspect the houses that would, like they would a rental apartment or a rental house for safety features? And I did talk to Chief Newman earlier and he said that they have to for their insurance. So that one's kind of already answered. Will caregivers be trained in fire safety, like fire extinguishers and fire escape planning and things like that? You know, how trained are they in case, you know, a fire starts? You know, it's my neighbor's house, I want to make sure that my house isn't going to be in jeopardy because of they're not being trained in how to use a fire extinguisher as a minimum, even though there's going to be a sprinkler system in the house, part of the renovation. And then one last one is I was wondering if the city can provide us a list of other group homes in the area so I can do some investigation through the internet to see how the prices of neighboring houses, their selling price, how it's affected them because I want to, I'm concerned that the selling price of my house is going to drop again, which is just barely starting to come back after the recession back from 2008. You know, I've had about a $50,000 drop in value for no reason at all since I put 100,000 into my house since I bought it. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to address some of these? Mr. Hunt will start.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep in mind as a council that this is not a legislative matter where you are to be, where you might be lobbied by the public or others to pass something or not pass something. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. You're acting as a judge and jury, almost like a court. And I gave this same advice to the zoning board of appeals and I'm going to give it to you. You should not have any ex parte communications with anyone regarding this matter. And you are going to be hearing this on August 11th in planning a zoning committee, probably committee the whole and then making a decision in a council meeting either that evening or I assume maybe the following evening based on committee the whole's recommendation. And it's really not fair to discuss this in public either without the applicant here and the applicant's representative. So what I plan to do is to take those questions and give them to the applicant's attorney. I can try to answer some of them or give you some of the information that you need, but you'll have any opportunity to present evidence in at the August 11th council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you both, yes.
The origin of the new street, Terry, I learned at that, at this meeting, I've done this thing called, because they pulled the, they pulled the mandates from the House Department of Commerce. And I've read a great deal now of state to the, of generally, community organization to read as citizens of the community really have anything. There's corruption, there's probably disruption. At least with all the coming and going, one of the main concerns. And the other, as we've done our research online, probably building a cap drop. And neighbor of ours had talked to a former county auditor and he said, you better believe you're probably, and everybody I've talked to about this said, I wouldn't buy the house there. Now...
And everybody I've talked to about this said, I wouldn't buy the house there. Now, I really believe in stitch about the situation. I think that they themselves are probably not being disruptive. It's just probably the coming and going of the services that are being provided for them. And then it's public perception, I don't know who's there because of that. Whereas it must be very innocuous. I know we have several group homes in the community, but not that big. So do we have to say it all?
I'm not sure I should answer a legal question in a public meeting when I'm the attorney for the city and the council and the mayor. And you may not like the answer that I give too, so. But, but the city's opportunity to regulate with respect to permanent residents who are disabled is extremely limited.
Thank you. Any more? Yes.
Mary Tawney, 397 Kerry J. Can I just have a couple of?
Okay, sorry. Just a couple of little things I wanted to ask. Our artist up on Richmond Road is now displaying the United States flag done in multiple colors. We've put up with a lot of crap in that front yard, and we've had to tolerate it because of his freedom of expression. But I personally am offended at seeing the United States flag displayed this way. And I think he's gone too far. And I want to know if the city can or will do anything about this, because I find this extremely offensive.
I'll defer to our attorney again.
The U.S. Supreme Court has said that this is a
I mean, is that not defacing the flag?
It's not a crime, but it's not, and the U.S. Supreme Court has said
Okay.
That's all I can tell.
The street signs on, in our neighborhood say road where they should say boulevard and boulevard where they should say road. I just want to know how you're progressing as far as getting those corrected? It's not a big deal? I just wondered.
Information's for the county, the president, it's not being finalized yet.
Okay. So we're working on it. Okay, thanks.
If I may.
Yes.
If I may, I had the same concerns about the American flag. Today I did some light reading on my iPad. There is a code, there is procedures of what we can and can't do to the flag. Now, listening to our law director, it sounds like it's just a suggestion of what we should do with our flag. I too feel insulted. I feel that it is defacing the American flag. You're right, we had to put up a lot of stuff over there. I understand the city's history of dealing with this individual over other items throughout the years. And, and I'm really disappointed if that is the fact, that our country, our courts have ruled in that way. It's only my comment also. It's just my belief. I believe that he's really making mockery of our flag, and it goes beyond just what he would call art. So for the record, and again, it sounds like it's, we don't have
We're stuck with it.
But I too am offended by that.
Thank you. One last thing. I know there's no trespassing allowed in the grounds of what used to be Mayfair Lake, that the airport owns it now. But I also realize that the lake is part of the Euclid Creek watershed. And I do walk back there occasionally when I babysit my grandson's dog. And the water flow that comes across under Richmond Road and then through that Mayfair property and into the lake and on down the ravine is being hindered by the damage to that road back there. When Mayfair Lake was back there, obviously they maintained the road because they had traffic coming in and out. Now that the airport owns it, they come in through the field because they can't come in from the road anymore. That driveway going back there is crumbling. It is falling apart. The last time I walked back there, which was not immediately after any rainstorm or anything, the water cannot get through under the road anymore. It is going over the top of the road. And it just seems to me like that's definitely interfering with the watershed process. I don't know how it's backing it up here. But I just thought maybe somebody from the city should be looking at that and seeing if it is an issue that the airport should deal with. I don't know if any of you have been back there and seen it or not, but it is disrupting the water flow.
Mr. Horton? I'd be glad you go look at it. I don't know if you have to walk back.
It's not that far to walk. If you get to the chain, it's not that far to walk to get in there in the water.
Is it not, you're not allowed to walk before natural flow? Artificial dam or?
You're, you're not allowed to block it within the thing that you're doing, but it's part of the deterioration process. I'm not really sure where that falls. There was a set of rules and
Is there, is there a
I would
There was a pulpit, but it's twisted, blocked, whatever. It's useless anymore.
I wonder if that caused the flood that we had up here during that heavy storm?
We had two, we had two feet or more over, over Richmond Road. So there's nothing, nothing holding back, nothing holding back that water, that, the road. One of the, one of the aspects that's come to mind, and I have talked to the airport manager about that, trying to see if he can improve that. One of the things is, you know, they do have some responsibility to be able to maybe provide fire service or some other emergency service back into that area. I mean, there is a, there is a road there that's been
But it's impassable.
But, I mean, this is, makes it impassable. So it's a little bit of a safety, potentially a hazard deterrent to getting safety equipment back there. I don't know if that'll be enough to give the county impetus to try to fix it or not.
Is there a, and is there a
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's probably not hard to treat these people in all places, but so Murphy and if someone, if a kid were back there, granted they'd be trespassing, but if they got in the water, they could definitely drown there. Yeah. And you would be hard pressed to get a fire truck back there.
Well, my concern would be that if the water's not flowing through that property, then the water is stagnant and that's
It's flowing.
Oh, is it?
It's flowing, but it's impeded.
I mean, mosquitoes would be a
Yeah, no, no, it's still flowing and it's, because I'm right on the lake and now that isn't an issue. I'm just concerned with when the heavy rains are, and it's already blocked, so it's already at road level. And then it's just, you have to see it sort of, what's going on right there.
In theory, in a couple more years, high rains will wash it out and it won't be pretty long ago.
Possibly.
In theory.
Mr. Alexander?
I mean, I think this would simply talk to the town, even if they don't want to put the carver back in, or they don't want to put the carver back in and just rip everything out and let the water flow where it goes. One of the two things has happened here. I mean, this, this ain't rocket science.
My first reaction was just take some of the road out instead of trying to solve it. But then with the issue of not turning a safety vehicle back there, that didn't seem like the best answer. So I'd better go look at it.
Yeah, right. Because they can't come in through the field from the different roadside, but if it's rainy and wet, you're, you're not going to get through there unless you're maintained. Right. You'd never get through that field on a wet day.
Okay, so thank you. We will follow up on that. Mr. Horton, you will follow up. Thank you, and thanks for recording that. We will move to, okay, one more? Thank you.
Dana Lymer, 4988, question. If the AEP parties dedicated city streets that's associated with states, is that a city dedicated street?
Only for Richmond Road and the coast.
Oh, really? Who's responsible then from the color side for the next driveway to get? In other words, that's a rhetorical condition. And of course, the buses travel that route a dozen times a day. That's a lot of bus traffic on probably a street that wouldn't design as bus traffic.
The, my understanding is all those parcels of the county are leased. And I don't know, it would probably depend on the agreements for, in other words, the rest of the rest of the waters responsible for the maintenance, which isn't much of an answer, because I think it's probably the contract. So it really is terrible. I mean, there's fishers in there over a foot wide. We're calling the county that maybe I am over too. There's two birds with one stone. And another point relative to that area, there was a nursery school back in there or a kindergarten or a preschool. I don't think they're operating anymore. It appears not. But they still have a sign out on Richmond Road. And I wondered what the city's policy is relative to a company leaving, but leaving their sign out. Macy pulled out, did their sign out, you know, and it probably required, you know. But I wondered what that city requirements are for someone who sets a sign on the new sign out. I don't, I don't know the answer to that when the building commissioner is not here for me, it would probably be the old course. And if
We can, Phil will follow up with that.
Yes.
I have a third question. Is there any rumors of any renters that's going on that you have?
I've heard some rumors, just compliments of fellow working, I don't know, who or city.
I, I can respond to that. You know, we've been in conversations, the mayor and I've been in conversations with W.C. Blitzer, who now owns the mall, and also been in conversations with some of the councilmen who is brokers, who's responsible behind the market and he or itself is making space. And at this point, he has said that he is working on it, that there is nothing on trees. He would not, one of the things that he told us, and we really would have followed that until in transnational, we'd be certain in the dry or after the surge, they would be reluctant to sell the thing, something to fear that either the door falls hard or maybe it's going to, or that he might would try to come in and influence somehow one or the other to stop the deal with Macy or the mall or in some way influence the deal that it was about, if it was better. But I will say that this city council was very happy to sound us to say that he will keep it posted as in one place changed and other not in practice. They're not trying to be secretive. One of the things he did say was that this is a process that unfortunately may not happen overnight because they don't want to, you know, to use, frankly, they don't want to have a key marker in there that can fly every night and be worth to the city. But at the same time, they're trying to get occupied as quickly as possible with the best possible options. And we just not looking like to, and we definitely working on getting, getting it sold or leased. We're working very hard on it, but he's not telling us anything on
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, do you have a question?
Yes.
I just thought I could ask. All right, ma'am.
Everybody knows.
Well, thank you. Sorry about putting you on the spot there. Then we will move on to our old business. Are you ready?
Resolution 65, 2015, introduced by Mayor Roach, second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a utility agreement with Cuyahoga County.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have moved to pass resolution number 65 dash 2015 with an amendment to add the pricing schedule to the utility agreement that includes a $2 per foot front of parcels in the city for sanitary sewer work and a $0.70 per foot front of parcels in the city for storm sewer work.
Second motion.
I'm sure you meant to suspend the
Oh, Miss, yes, yes, yes. Is that what you were going to say?
First motion would be to suspend.
My apologies, I moved to suspend the rule, sir.
Oh, second is to suspend the rules. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Now I move to pass resolution number 65 dash 2015 with an amendment to add the pricing schedule to the utility agreement that includes a $2 per foot front of parcels in the city for sanitary sewer work and a $0.70 per foot, excuse me, per front foot of parcels in the city for storm sewer work.
I second that.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Well, I did sense, and we're a little late with this, but we just want to clarify that, that $2.70 originally was being put into, was it into the sanitary fund? And now what we're doing is separating that money. The $2 is going into sanitary and $0.70 is going to sewer. So that's what happened with that piece of legislation. Pardon me? The other way around. Okay. The other way around. Thank you.
That's per the county's request.
Per the county's request. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. All right, thank you. Resolution 65, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 66, 2015, introduced by Alexander, first reading. A resolution accepting a bid for the various sections of the bid specifications for repairs and resurfacing of various city streets for the 2015 road program and authorizing a contract therefore.
Mr. Alexander, would you like to come in?
This is to accept the bid on the street repair. One of the sections that the residents would probably be happy to see, we're going to do some work on the section in front of the mall on Richmond Road. We won't take it up to 100%, but it'll make it a lot better than it is now. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Horton if he has anything else to say on that.
No, I agree with you 100%. That's probably the thing that people are most interested in. I've got more calls out than everything else put together.
With that, I will move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Resolution 66, 2015 passes unanimously.
Ordinance number 67, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Richmond Heights, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015, to amend ordinance numbers 2016, sorry, number 16, 2015, and 39, 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. O'Toole, would you like to come in?
Yes, ma'am. From time to time, it's necessary that we amend appropriations. We predict the way funds are going to be incoming and outgoing in the city. And this ordinance brings a number of funds into balance, so they will not have a negative balance. And this is exactly what the audit cure of the state would want us to do. And it basically moves funds from one fund to another so that you have positive balances. So I will move for suspension.
Second motion.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Order 67, 2015 passes unanimously. You never gave us the
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Ordinance 67, 2015 passes unanimously. You never gave us the first opinion, right?
I know.
Resolution Number 68, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution authorizing a contract with the Walter H. Drain Company for codification services.
Madam President?
Yes.
I will comment on this. Every year, the city council does, passes a number of ordinances and resolutions, and the Walter H. Drain Company takes the summation of that work and codifies it so that it can be put into some type of an electronic medium so that everyone can go out and see exactly what we have done. So this is something that we've done every year since I've been on council, and it's a, it's a very good deal for the city. It's about the same that we spent last year. So I will move for suspension of the rules. Second motion.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 68, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 69, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city's continued participation in the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Purchasing Program for 2015, 2016, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. O'Toole, comments?
Yes, for a number of years, the city of Richmond Heights has participated in this cooperative purchasing program, which pools the buying power of a number of entities and allows us to buy gasoline at a lower rate than if we were to go it alone. Last year, we saved approximately $30,000 by being a member of this purchasing cooperative, and it makes sense for us to do it again. So I move for suspension of the rules. Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes. Move for passage.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 69, 2015, passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 70, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution authorizing engagement of the law firm of Squire, Pat, and Boggs to prepare disclosure filings related to a bond issue.
Comments, Mr. O'Toole?
Yes, ma'am. This is a administrative responsibility that we're required to do by law with relationship to a bond issue that we did a number of years ago. And this firm will provide the paperwork and get us up to snuff with where we need to be in terms of a specific filing requirement. So I move for suspension of the rules.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 70, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 71, 2015, introduced by Mayor Roach, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with PC alternatives for necessary audio visual services.
Mayor Roach, comments?
Yes, this is a continuation for our audio video for the council meeting through, I think, mid-September.
Move for suspension?
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 71, 2015 passes unanimously. Are there additional?
I do.
Yes.
I'd like an executive session for the threat of regulation. Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
That completes the business for tonight. We're going to go over to our meeting and come back and then adjourn. Then adjourn. Thank you, thank you all for attending. Thank you. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry? Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lentine?
Yes.